Lord, we thank you so much as we come to this end of the day and we thank you for the beauty of it and we thank you for the gift of life itself. God, we thank you that even when times are difficult, we know that you are with us and we thank you that you are with us in the times where we celebrate and come together to thank you for all the things that you do for us. Lord, we thank you so much for our city. We thank you for bringing us to this place for just such a time as this. God, I thank you for all of our city officials, all of our city leaders. I thank you for our first responders. Thank you for our teachers, our business owners, every sector of society in our city who works together and comes together to make this a great place to live, where people can thrive and enjoy life and be a part of something that is good and much bigger than us. God, I pray that you would bless this meeting tonight, bless everyone here, and God bless all of our citizens from the youngest to the oldest. May this be a place we continue to come together and work together to see great things happen in our city. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get the vote please? I mean, can I get the roll call please? Can we get a vote up here? Can I get the roll call please?
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Oblaski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
We have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Are there any changes or amendments to the current agenda? Not will move on as printed. Next is approval amendment of an approval of amendments from the work session August eighteenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any, is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is minutes from August twenty-third.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have one modification to make to that. Apparently, I didn't do too well speaking into the mic or being that legible. So from my comments from last one, I'd like to add that I discussed overall intent to make public comments easier for the citizens and the overall purpose of making those mods. And also that we were adding SMS and paper speaking signup capability for those attending the meeting. That was in the, uh, uh, that was what I said for that meeting. I'd like to have that amended.
All right. Is there any other change?
I've got a copy of that as well as both leases, Lisa's squared, to make sure that we got that taken care of.
Any other changes? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Council mem-, Council Presid-, I'm sorry. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, a movement to presentation and awards, and we'll start with Madison Dolphin Swimming Dive Team.
Okay. Hi. For those of you that don't know me, I know quite a few of you. I'm Hemmietta King and I'm the president of Madison Dolphins. I seem to have been doing this an awful long time. I was trying to work out exactly how many years old we are. I think we're about forty-four years old, Dolphins. And we each competitive swimming to all the young swimmers out there roughly ages five to eighteen. Um, I'm sure you've all seen that. So we generally swim from the beginning of May to the end of July. Our team numbers were up this year, so obviously last year we had to shrink greatly. We only had about sixty swimmers because all we could do was practice. We had a hundred and fifty swimmers to try out over three days and we had to turn away at least ninety of those swimmers. We are desperately short on pool space, even between the indoor pool and the outdoor pool and with the dome. And I suspect MSA had a similar story to tell this fall. So we had about a hundred and eighty-four swimmers and divers and then we managed to hold our regular fundraising medal meet where we get swimmers from all over North Alabama and we had about two hundred and fifty. Um, so we, we did much better this year with expenses. We were about two thousand dollars in, in the red last year purely just couldn't do what we'd normally do. So we, we made up for it this year and we managed to get our sponsors back, which was good as well. So we're looking, looking better there again. Um, and then that's just some swimmers pictures for you of what happened. That's the dive team this year. Quite a few, a lot of younger divers, which was good to see. Um, some photos from the state meet and state champions again. Um, we were down at Albertville in their nice new facility and we managed to swim in Boadis Pool for Districts in their brand-new pool and that was the first meet they held in that pool. Um, so that was exciting. And that's it. So I'm assuming we've got any questions?
No ma'am, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into a pu- public comments and no one signed up, so we're at three minutes apiece. Anybody that would like to address council and mayor? Yeah, go ahead Mike.
Good evening. I highly applaud your initiative to improve the accessibility and quality of public participation and concurrently the effectiveness of conducting council business. Public participation is the very heart of a democracy and the measure of a healthy one. You've clearly been deliberate and thoughtful in your efforts to get this right. I note with added appreciation that you've considered and integrated public input in shaping your proposed changes, a valuable and fitting contribution for this subject. While this resolution is not exactly as I would have written it, I fully endorse it. Its provisions are reasonable and appropriate and beyond the script of the resolution, there are several accompanying enhancements. I also recognize that this is merely phase one or the first step in the staircase. Understanding though that you are balancing priorities and time, I encourage you to literally write phase two onto your calendars so that it doesn't fall the way of impact fees or other important commitments. This tiger team was formed to make recommendations to more easily allow access and accommodations. One might argue that the phase one resolution imposes more restrictions than it affords accommodations and I anticipate that phase two will be where you realize the full extent and benefit of this initiative. In this context of continual improvement, I submit that among other things, phase two should address reasonable accommodation, not just for ADA conditions, but for emergent medical and other legitimate circumstances. Video archiving to capture the essence of discussions and the important factors that inform council's deliberative process and video participation. A mentor promoted something we in his name called the Sweeney Protocol. First, talk with someone in person. If you can't do that, video conference with them. If you can't do that, fall back to a phone call and only use email as a last resort. This underscores the importance of quality of communication as well as building positive relationships. While public video participation may introduce remote legal implications, as with everything council does, it is legally permissible. It is not required, but neither is it prohibited and it is something that adds to the quality of real-time communication. Communication is perhaps the single most pivotal challenge in any organization and technology is a valuable tool to enhance communication, a necessary one if we are to remain viable. Technology is not just the future, it is the now. We must embrace it and fully capitalize on the magnified efficiencies and opportunities it offers. There are legitimate concerns to implementation that can and should be mitigated through policy and procedure. That's precisely what we're doing with the current resolution. We shouldn't let the fact that some of this can be hard or complex deter us from doing what is right. We shouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We also need not allow perfect to be the enemy of good enough. Let's move forward where we can and continue to refine our processes along the way. We won't get to a hundred percent with today's resolution as my OCD self would have preferred, but that's okay. Incremental continual improvements will move us up the staircase. Thank you for this positive initiative, the considerable care you put into it and the very encouraging first step this resolution offers.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any, is there anyone else? If not, we'll close pu- public comments and move into the Cessna Gen and Finance Committee report.
Uh, Finance Committee met this evening and, uh, the bills that needed to be paid, everything was in order. We did have one question about item C, which I think, I think we got a resolution to answer to. Um, other than that, uh, everything was in order. And I did want to mention that there are two, two donations. Um, one from Wavelength Incorporated, that's the senior citizens center for, uh, two thousand eight hundred ten dollars. And then there's another, uh, Lance Irby Memorial Fund that also came in for three hundred and thirty dollars. Um, and those just continue to come in. We're grateful for that. Um, other than that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to mention one item and that's letter I. Uh, tonight, we officially retire the badge of Major Stringer, um, his badge and his weapon after twenty-five years of service to our city, our community, our residents. And I just wanted to publicly, even though he's not here tonight, publicly thank him for a quarter of a century of service to us uh, through some very difficult times, through, um, you know, school shooting and just horrible times. And, uh, I'll just say that he was there personally for me when I became a crossing guard at Bob Jones. Uh, I didn't know what I was doing, but I had suffered a personal loss and got that job and he was so supportive, gave me his cell number, told me to call him if I needed anything. And, um, I just want to wish him well in his new endeavor as police chief in, uh, Baytown, Texas and, uh, just wish him well and thank him so much for his service to us. And that's all I have.
Absolutely. Is there any other discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to presentation, um, of reports and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, three quick things. Uh, first, with our Rocket City Trash Pandas, hopefully weather will hold out and this is last week, everybody can go watch games. But with that said, also, uh, last week they came in and brought the next phases of their twenty, twenty-one payments. So not only have they paid off everything from twenty-twenty that we had negotiated, but they in turn have already caught up with twenty-twenty-one and very appreciative of that. Go see a game if you haven't, uh, it's a lot of fun. Uh, secondly, we recognize the roundabout construction at Balch and Gillespie, uh, while it's moving forward pretty quickly and we hope the weather holds out for that also. Uh, it also has created traffic situations throughout the neighborhoods. I want to thank the police department for quickly making adjustments. Uh, we made one yesterday only to then have the house right in the midst of one of that roofing and bring about six trucks in the middle along with, you know, uh, the debris that's on the side from, uh, uh, trees. You know, we are continuing to make adjustments. Also, we have set up a committee with the schools and Dr. Nichols where we'll meet next week to address all traffic situations now that we've had a couple of weeks under our belt with, uh, schools and, and what's going on with the new midtown, uh, with, uh, folks out on county line. So we're going to be addressing all of those, looking at any situations we can and we'll start that process next week and then bring the folks like engineering, public works, the folks that we need to into that. And lastly, I just want to go ahead and personally thank our county commissioner, Steve Haraway in District Two. You know, we're, we have, we're blessed in so many different ways. When we talk about the budget, when, uh, when we, Wednesday night, we'll see where Steve has again picked up some of our capital expenses that he can help with. But also when it comes to situations outside of the norm, we can always count on Steve to not only focus on what's right and, but also to, to work for the city and, and he's doing that right now in a, in a situation at Balch and Gillespie with a proposed development. We continue to focus on that, but if we didn't have him there, I don't think we'd have the success so far. And I just want to tell you how much I, we appreciate him and how much he does for us. And with that said, that's all I have.
Very good. We'll start with addition number one.
Yes, sir. I have two items for your approval tonight. Is my mic on? Okay, there we go. Um, the first is Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash two seventy-eight R. And this, uh, is the classification plan and changing the titles of revenue permit specialist to revenue technician and then police major to assistant chief. We have, uh, HR Director Terry Towery here with us. If you have any questions, this came before HR Committee last week and we approved it unanimously and therefore I make a motion to approve for tonight.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can, can, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for that. The second item I have is Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash two eighty-one dash R. And this is the calendar for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. We have a new holiday date on this calendar. It's the recognition of Juneteenth and it will be next year on June twentieth. I think traditionally it'll be June nineteenth, but due to the, uh, Sunday, it'll be June twentieth. And HR also met last week and we recommend approval of this resolution as well. And with that, I make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any, any discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Council, um, Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. And the only other item I wanted to mention is that I had the opportunity to attend the Council on Form Relations Vaccines and Variants Zoom Seminar last week. It was very informative. Uh, I am sad to report that less than forty percent of Alabamians have been vaccinated, so I would encourage everyone to talk with your physician about this. And, um, as you see, we're socially distancing here as well and, um, just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Addition number two.
Um, yes, since our last meeting three weeks ago, because we had the fifth Monday, um, I have attended a Madison Utilities Meeting and a Madison Utilities Work Session where we discussed their budget for the fall, the upcoming year. And also, um, was, um, given the opportunity to attend the nine-eleven memorial ceremony at Toyota Field Madison Fire Department and Police Department put that on and they did a spectacular job as you would expect. Um, I did not realize that our chaplain had such a beautiful voice. She sang the, um, National Anthem for us. Also, there was an Industrial Development Board Meeting and there are some new developments coming that we'll be able to talk about soon, so that's exciting. I would also like to thank our tiger team, Lisa, Renee, John and Megan for their hard work on the resolution that we will be voting on in a little while about, um, the way we conduct meetings. Y'all, this is not a small task that they took on and they did a very thoughtful and, um, thorough job. And I just really appreciate them listening to all the comments and filtering through and trying to make the best fit they could. And, um, just wanted to say thank you and that's all I have.
Very good. Addition number three.
So I kind of want to tack on to what Connie was mentioning. You know, I would like to thank all of our public safety officers, the police, fire and even public works. You know, a lot of times they don't, they don't get credit, but, uh, they're, they're out there a lot of times, uh, with, with police and fire when there's an issue. So I'd like to thank those, those, uh, those safety officers, particularly at this time as we celebrate the twentieth anniversary of nine-eleven. Um, also, uh, with the budget, I'd like to thank, uh, everybody on the Finance Committee, um, for helping us with a strong budget and working with the mayor's office. Uh, it's been, it was a pleasure and we got through that. Uh, Roger, he's not here, but I'd like to thank him. He's done a lot of hard work on that. Um, and we'll get to see some of the summary of that, uh, later this week and council will go, I'll go through with individual council members and make that, make that to the next, um, meeting. And the last thing is, uh, I'd like to echo what, uh, Mara said about, uh, Major Stringer. I'm, you know, I'm excited for him and I'm, I'm glad that he's, he's getting to, uh, move on to a, to a better position and, uh, and I am, I am grateful to him for his service and he was very personable to, to me as well. So, um, that's, that's all I've got.
Very good. Addition number five.
Uh, first, I have Resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash two eighty-three dash R, appointing Judge Thomas Parker as our presiding municipal judge and appointing Aaron Ryan as an associate municipal judge. And I, uh, recommend that for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Get Teddy for a second. Is there, is there any discussion? Not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And for those of you who can stay after the conclusion of the meeting, we're going to do the swearing-in, um, uh, for our new associate judge and we'll have a small reception outside for those of you who can join us. Okay, next, um, I have, uh, an ordinance and a resolution before you. Uh, let me, uh, just as a reminder, um, let everyone know that the tiger team members were appointed by President Shaw after Governor Ivey's executive order declaring a state of emergency had expired to make recommendations to more easily allow access and accommodations under the Open Meetings Act when virtual meetings are not allowed. The tiger team met and made recommendations at our first council work session after being appointed and we made recommendations such as creating additional methods of participating in public comments by signing up by an SMS text system before or during the meeting, adding an email all council button to our website that is being redesigned, um, adding the capacity to leave a voicemail for all council with our new phone system that we had just recently approved. We are removing from the previous, uh, the previous requirement in the ordinance requiring members of the public to state their address along with their name in order to speak. Some people are hesitant to come forward and have their addresses stated in the meeting and included in the minutes. We recommended moving the guidelines regarding public comments and public hearings out of ordinance and instead establishing a policy through resolution, which is before you tonight, and had a first reading at our last council meeting on A twenty-three. The recommended policy that we're presenting, um, to you tonight for a vote was discussed at our previous council meeting. Some of the highlights of the recommended policy, our public comments will remain at the beginning of the meeting on any topic that has not changed. We, uh, are recommending three minutes for all public comments and there's no need to reserve time by a certain date to be able to speak. We're recommending five minutes for all public hearings and additional time for those proposing the action that we will have the public hearing on. Public hearing comments may also be submitted in writing and a synopsis of those comments will be included in the minutes for those who cannot attend the public hearing. Minutes will reflect actions taken by council in positions for and against matters subject to public hearings. Minutes are not transcripts of the meetings. After we had submitted our proposal, we began receiving some comments from fellow council members during the meeting. Councilmember Spears asked us to designate an area where video and audio recordings of the meetings would be made from non-city personnel. Note that our city personnel still continue to stream our meetings and video from the meetings remain until the minutes are approved at the following meeting. We also received, uh, suggestions from Councilmember Denzine and others to remove the notice requirement. We had requested that notice be provided if you were intending to record the meeting and you were non-city personnel noon on the day of the meeting. And so, and to make clear that there were numerous ways to declare your intention to speak during public comments. So, uh, the texting, adding cards, calling the clerk's office and nothing, uh, eliminates the chair's prerogative to recognize anyone who stands up to say, "I have a public comment at the end. You're just not going first." Uh, those changes are reflected in the version of the resolution before you tonight. So first, I would like to present, make motion to approve Ordinance Number twenty, twenty-one dash two sixty-nine that, um, takes section two forty, two forty-two-ten of the previous ordinance and deletes it and section two forty-two-sixteen of the previous ordinance, um, amended in its entirety as follows. Discussion or debate on any matter may be limited to prescribed time upon majority vote at the council. Discussion or debate of matters under consideration by the council will generally be limited to members of the council, city staff and consultants. And section two forty-two-seventeen of the previous ordinance is hereby deleted in its entirety. That's my.
Motion. Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number twenty, twenty-one dash two sixty-eight dash R. The resolution encapsulating all the recommendations that I summarized before, pulling, uh, certain sections out of ordinance into policy and I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have something I'd like to say. I always tell my constituents that I would tell them why I vote the way I do. So just keeping with that, I'd like to say that my stance on public participation in the governance of our city has not wavered. Hearing and listening to the voice of the people is crucial to me as your government representative. Now, I understand that Tiger Team was tasked with a certain directive. I thought they'd meant that very well. There is a very, very strong foundation to this. Um, I am concerned though that the new resolution does not include a virtual accommodation for the general public. I appreciate the ways accommodations are being developed for those with disabilities. But in the world of a continuing pandemic, there is no accommodation for addressing the council in real time in this resolution. I understand that there is continued disagreement on the legality and the implementation of a virtual platform. I have since learned that the General Counsel of the American League of the Municipalities has stated that electronic public participation is not prohibited. So in view of that, I just would encourage the Tiger Team to continue to look at the viability of the virtual platform as a way for the citizens to speak in real time to their representatives. And, um, as I said, they do this, I think, continue to research and develop the policies for archiving city, uh, city council video recordings. There is one other thing that I would have changed and we don't all agree on things, but, um, in keeping with my guiding principles of allowing the citizen's voice to be heard, I believe, excuse me, excuse me. I believe that public comments and, um, the public hearing comments that are received by the city clerk for the express purpose of the city council deliberations should be forwarded to the city council members by the clerk and also summarized in the minutes. It is just another way of making a record of what went into our deliberations. But it didn't make it and that's fine. I will continue to support this resolution. I will vote for this resolution. But I did have those concerns and I didn't want to make them public.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to thank, uh, all you guys that were on the Tiger Team and what a wonderful job you did and, uh, you know, echo one of our citizens that, you know, it's, it may not be perfect, but it is something that, that we all came together and, and come up with and it was, uh, basically you guys, you know, forwarded that to us. Um, I'm really happy that we had the group that we had to do that. Um, and they looked at it, uh, at a tremendous level. Um, that's a, that's a long ordinance, a lot of information. There's a lot of things to consider and, you know, we're, they're not only considering what's happening today, but what happens, you know, five years from now or ten years from now or maybe even five months from now when hopefully we're through the pandemic. Um, everything changes and this too shall pass. So, you know, this, this ordinance is not just for today, it's for tomorrow as well. So, thank you guys.
Appreciate it. Yeah, one point of clarification and I just want to make sure that this is, is very clear or crystal clear. Um, emails that do come to the city clerk or that come to us, if they come to us individually, we're free to email those, forward those for other council members for consideration. Um, emails that do come to the city clerk and even the city council email address, um, which I can't remember if it's city.council or citycouncil@madisonal.gov, but that's out there and folks can email that and if they email the clerk, she'll forward that to us and, and those will be summarized in the minutes. So that part that you were mentioning, those emails, that they come to the city clerk, she can forward that to us, um, and then the same with us and, and those can be summarized. Um, so, um, and we didn't get rid of that. Um, so, um, and we didn't get rid of that. I mean, that's up to the clerk to put those in to be summarized.
Okay.
But, so.
Um, I just have, um, a couple of observations. I mean, first, in the process of doing this, and we held a, a work session, uh, it is impossible to make everyone happy and give everyone a hundred percent of, of what they requested. Uh, we walked in with, uh, some general recommendations, and then we had discussion, and I, I think we viewed our job as trying to come forward with, uh, points that our council could reach consensus on. Uh, we are not done with our work, we still have another portion to look at. Just to give you a preview, though, since Councilwoman Denzine did mention, uh, the General Counsel of the League of Municipalities, she was actually present at a meeting of North Alabama Clerks, and as part of our research, our own city clerk was there and talked to her about the processes that we have in place. And one of the things the General Counsel of the League of Municipalities said was that Madison already goes above and beyond in terms of first, streaming meetings, not all councils do that, retaining the meeting recording until the next, uh, meeting when minutes can be approved. She commented that that was above and beyond. So, um, i- it is one thing to say, uh, that the League of Municipalities says it's not prohibited. It is another thing to say it is authorized by statute and you are absolved of liability if something goes awry. And so some of the things that we're struggling with are what is the best way to have conversation and talk with each other as council members? I think we all have recognized that being present, listening to each other, seeing each other is far better than participating by Zoom, and indeed, uh, some of the technological challenges caused the Open Meetings Act to be drafted the way it is because it does favor and it does not allow us to have a virtual meeting, uh, unless you're under an emergency order. So I really appreciate all the work that Megan and Lisa, uh, have done and continue to do, and John and I will remain, uh, receptive to any other suggestions that you, or members of the public, have as we continue, uh, in the task that you assigned us to.
I'd like to thank you so much for the amount of time and effort y'all have all put into this.
And, r- real quickly, the one part that you mentioned, Renee, that I think I've heard from folks is adding the city council meeting to our website after the meeting and keeping it on there until the minutes are approved gives everyone the ability, if you couldn't be here, to see the entire meeting, uh, when, twenty-four-seven. Uh, the second part is, and what you guys have added, uh, what I heard from folks is the button that in turn will allow one email to go to all council members is critical. You know, so many times we're having to find you guys and either cut and paste or do it again. That is something that allows a voice to be heard to all seven if you can't be here or at a time of your convenience. So both of those things are critical, the first one especially, uh, in giving folks the ability to see that meeting even if they weren't here for two or three weeks, depending on the next time that we meet.
Very, very good, Ken.
Okay. I would just like to apologize to, uh, Councilwoman Bartlet. We did not mean to be disrespectful in any way when she was talking. We were just discussing what was in there. I'm very, I'm very sorry if I came across that we were not paying attention to what she said.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
Right, anything else on your end?
Um, oh, sorry, yes, sorry, I dropped my resolutions and I didn't get to...
Your, your work is done, however.
I'm sorry, that was the heavy lifting. Okay, so let me, let me...
We're gonna talk long tonight.
Do, oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, well, first of all, I see Chief Bailey here, and Brandy, Brandy's not here, but I really do appreciate the work that she put in. I know that she did a lot of the heavy lifting on the nine-eleven, uh, memorial and ceremony. Um, I will tell you all that each time nine-eleven rolls around, um, i- it is hard for me personally. Um, I remember that day so vividly, and even twenty years later, um, I was pregnant with our son, and he was due to be born on September fifteenth, so I was in my doctor's office, and when I had left for that appointment, one tower had been hit. By the time I got to, uh, the doctor's office, the second tower had been hit. I, I remember it so vividly and the feelings, um, of that day, and, um, I'm in such admiration for the brave, uh, first responders and firefighters and police and everyone who worked so hard, and all of the brave citizens who, uh, helped save the White House or Capitol that day. So I thank you for a lovely ceremony and, um, and all the work that you do for the city of Madison, so thank you. Um, I'm gonna end on a high note, my shop local spotlight. Uh, I'd like to highlight the work of a local business, Newberry Pecans, and we, uh, the owners are here in Madison. They, uh, have a website, newberrypecans.com. If you're looking for Christmas gifts, they have these great tins that you can send to people, and they also can give you all the pecans you're gonna need for your holiday cooking, so let me give a shout out to Newberry Pecans, and that's it.
Very good. District number six.
All right, first I'll start with the fun stuff. Hughes Widening, okay, Perma Shell, the barrels. Now, I've had a, a constituent named Adam who has repeatedly asked me about the barrels and why they have to continually stay there even if it looks like no construction works being done. So, for the answer to that, the barrels have to remain since it is an active construction project, active as in not complete. Okay, the paving is not complete, and there is a drop-off in the eastmost lane that is barreled off. Barrels must remain on the project and the project, until the project is complete. Um, also, they are working on the utility issues on the east side of Hughes. Uh, once the issues are resolved, the construction cu- crews will be back on site to begin the storm pipe installation. Uh, and they are still working on, for all of us that live along there, they, they pre, they did the road, so it was all bumpy, right? Well, that's starting to fall apart. So as you go from Hughes Road into your subdivision, there's starting to be a lot of problems, and they are working on that, so all the, all of my constituents that live along there, they are working on that, and they're gonna come up with a solution so the road doesn't to, continue to deteriorate, um, until we wait for the project to be done. They are working on it. Uh, number two, Senior Center, congratulations to Bonnie. She has been promoted as the permanent director of the Senior Center. Her ex- enthusiasm and passion will benefit the center for, for years to come, and I'm, I'm so pleased that she has this position now. I also want to, uh, thank Wavelength for their donation. Uh, Bonnie and I went there and we accepted it on behalf of the city. Uh, it is a wonderful story because the work, the person that started the, the fund in her, in her office, she had been a recipient, her mother had, of Meals on Wheels, and she was so grateful to have that service that she wanted to give something back. So she went to her office manager, and they arranged to do, to do this donation. And, um, it was so, it was, it was so touching, the way that they wanted to give back, and, and I do want to give a special thank you to Wavelength for doing, Wavelength for doing that. Uh, also, I am thrilled that the Madison Police Citizens Advisory Committee will be having their first public meeting. It will be Wednesday, September twenty-ninth, six o'clock, here in the chambers. I am so excited that this is finally happening. We've been working on it for months, they've been training for months, they've been learning everything they need to know. I'm so excited that this is finally happening. I encourage everyone to attend this meeting, to become involved with them, so we can have greater cooperation between the citizens and the police department. It's good now, I just know it can be better. Um, I'm really excited, there will be a meet and greet afterwards, so you can meet with your district representative and get to know them better, so I'm thrilled that this is about to happen finally, and that was September twenty-ninth. And finally, I would like to add my thank you to Major Stringer. I wish to thank him for his loyalty and his hard work for the city of Madison. While his path is taking him to Baytown, Texas, he will always be a Madison police officer in our hearts. I wish him and his wife Amanda and their family a smooth transition as they settle in Texas and as he becomes the new sheriff in town. I, um, I have no doubt that he will protect the citizens of Baytown with the same compassion and the same dedication as he's protected us here in Madison. I will miss him greatly, and I wish him the best of luck. That's all I have.
Thank you. District number seven.
Yeah, so a few things tonight. Uh, I tell you, I wanna, uh, congratulate Major Stringer. Um, you know, I'm proud of him for his years of service here, his many years of dedication, and also proud for him for the opportunity he got going forward, so, uh, may, best of luck to you, um, you know, going forward, Major. Uh, do wanna, uh, thank as well, uh, the mayor, as well as Officer Dixon, uh, yesterday for, uh, just stellar work, very quick work with the, uh, uh, traffic calming, um, in one of the detours, uh, due to roundabout and bolting Gillespie, so, um, you know, our, our, a lot of times citizens get frustrated, myself included, uh, on, on what we deem the off-hours, and our, our city staff's always working, and, uh, so I appreciate the, the, uh, assistance there that went in, um, resolving those issues. Um, and then, at the same time, I want to thank our Tiger Team, uh, other, you know, Renee, uh, Megan, Lisa, that all, you know, went into, uh, and Jason, went into working on that. Um, there's a lot of, of comments, a lot of public input in it, and just that process, and, uh, Renee, thank you for driving us and keeping us on task, uh, when I would probably get on my eighty-day and follow a squirrel, so, um, but, uh, you know, all that and said, um, that's all I've got.
Very good. Thank you. So there's no board committee appointments tonight, so we'll move into public hearings, and Johnny Blizzard's up.
Good evening, y'all. We have one, uh, one presentation, it's public hearing on proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash two thirteen, zoning certain property owned by Brad and Christie Pecho, and located at one oh four seven oh Seagulls Road to AG Agriculture. And we're asking for a continuance on this to the, uh, September twenty-seventh meeting. We did not get, uh, the synopsis, uh, uh, published in time, so, uh, this will allow us to do that and make everything legal.
We need a vote on that, Megan? All right, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to, for a continuance?
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion?
Do we need to, in that motion, do we need to say what we're continuing to?
Yes.
Twenty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
So the motion is to continue this to the September twenty-seventh. There's no discussion, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes. And then, on the department reports, we'll start with planning.
We have three items. Uh, the first is proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash two fifty-eight, ascending to the annexation of certain property owned by MM Holdings LLC, located on the east side of Sky, uh, Skyline Road and, uh, north of, uh, Stella Drive, and this is the first reading.
All right. You can go ahead.
Okay. Uh, it's been a while since I've been to this one.
You're doing great.
Resolution, uh, number two thousand twenty-one dash, uh, two fifty-four dash R, setting a public hearing on proposed ordinance, uh, number two thousand twenty-one, uh, dash two fifty-five, uh, zoning certain property owned by MM Holdings LLC, located on the east side of Skyline Road, uh, north of Stella Drive to R two medium-density residential district, and again, this is the first reading, heading to public hearing.
So we, we need a motion to set the public hearing.
Motion to set the public hearing.
We got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can, can I get the vote, please?
Teddy said it, hold a second.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
And motion passes.
And lastly, we have proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash two forty-nine, vacation of a utility and drainage easement located in Silver Creek subdivision, one 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 Wood Creek Drive. The first reading was, uh, August twenty-third.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Actually, it was, uh...
It was Seifert.
Seifert and then Connie.
I'm much better than him.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. Next is Cory, the recreation.
Good evening, uh, my first item is resolution two thousand twenty-one two thirty-seven dash R, authorizing an agreement with Madison Missus Mission Church for use of gym space. Um, anybody that's familiar with park and recreation knows we always struggle for gym space for our programs. Um, Madison Mission Church has been gracious enough to, uh, allow us to use their gym for our youth and adult sports programs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is one of those, uh, again, to remind everybody, we have, you know, the mayor's office has two hours every two weeks, it's set aside for citizens, it's thirty-minute slots. These guys came in, you know, of course, that's where District Three, uh, does their voting, but they came in and said, "We have a lot of opportunity to support the city, we'd like to talk to you guys about what we might be able to do and help you with." Uh, this was the very first thing, having played in that gym many times, and they were more than happy to have a meeting with Cory and, and us, and, and, uh, now we're into an, into an agreement. Have a lot of other space there that they eventually have said that they'd like to work with the city on, but again, just a great community partner, utilizing some time, and in turn, kind of a win-win for everybody.
That's all. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
My second item is resolution two thousand twenty-one two seventy-three dash R, authorizing contractor agreement with G-Tech LLC to assemble the air-supported structure in Dublin Park in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred dollars. Uh, we do this every October, um, scheduled for the first week of October, but I think we need like four dry days in a row, so that may change.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
I, I, I got a question. Cory, is there, do you think there's an opportunity for us to get a, a discount? I mean, we're gonna have to do this every year for the foreseeable future. I mean, if we sign a longer, a three-minute, if we went out for a contract, do you, do you think that's possible?
I can ask. I don't know what their profit margin is on it, um, we, we do kinda get a discount 'cause we used to hire a firm out of St. Louis, and we used to have to pay for somebody to come down for a week, so paying for the hotel wasn't included in that. Um, I can ask.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes.
Uh, my third item is resolution two thousand twenty-one two seventy-five dash R, ordering bid to Struthers Recreation LLC for playground equipment installation in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. As you recall, uh, we, uh, allocated some funding for neighborhood park, uh, equipment improvements, uh, this will install all the playground and shade structures that we've ordered from them previously.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
Cory, is this identified towards any park in specific, specifically, or is this across all the ones we identified?
Yeah, the, the ones that we identified when we originally allocated the funding.
Okay.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Final item is resolution two thousand twenty-one two seventy-four dash R, approving Madison Swim and Dive Team Facility Use Agreement. Um, as Henrietta said, this is the fortieth-plus year that we've been working with the dolphin swim team.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you, Cory.
And legal.
I have two items for your consideration tonight, and the first one is resolution number two, two thousand twenty-one two seven-seven R, and this is a resolution to approve the assignment of the development agreement for the Publix Shopping Center on Hughes Road to a new company that's purchasing the property. Um, as you know, the city council adopted this development agreement back in two thousand seventeen and it authorizes up to one point nine million dollars of sales tax rebates only from the Publix Grocery Store, so we're approaching about halfway to the development agreement total, so it very well may be paid off early. The developer has completed all of its obligations under the development agreement, including the road and intersection improvements and making sure that all the storefronts are occupied and have leases, um, if they're not yet physically there, but they're on the way and according to the planning department. Um, so they're all good to go and they're actually selling the property to a real estate investment company, and so they're asking for your approval to assign the development agreement rights to the new company.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second.